All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our meeting this evening on May the eighteenth. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Schardt will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the May fourth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion carried. We have no public hearings, no delegations, no reading of bylaws. To reports from administration, can I get a motion, please, that council approved the amended out-of-scope compensation policy? Number HB-five as presented, and Counselor Sorenson will make that motion. And we'll hand things over to interim CEO Sarah Bitner. Take it away, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank council for allowing administration to bring back this item. The first time that we presented it, there was some information that wasn't included. So we've resubmitted this policy with the procedural information attached for your information. Yeah, so just once again, just thanking you for allowing us to to resubmit and for looking at the resubmitted policy. So it's been presented for your review once again.
All right. Thank you, CEO Bitner. Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Wilkinson, you are muted.
Oh, I had unmuted before, sorry. Okay, to you, Sarah, and to our HR Colin, I would really like to thank both of you. I had concerns about this at our committee of the whole. You have addressed all of those concerns just in a wonderful manner, and I really appreciate it. I'm glad to see you got rid of the overrange payment spot. Just an excellent idea. You have no, nothing about hot market, just on the one with definitions for reclassification. I didn't notice coursework in there, but it is mentioned in everything else, so probably at a price there. And the green circling, it's just perfect. When I read through this, I was just just so happy to see the changes, and I think it's exactly what we need. Some very fair method to show what you're being compensated for and some criteria as to why you are being compensated in that manner. So thank you for all the work that you put into it. I will certainly be supporting this, even if it goes to the fiftieth percentile, which I never thought I'd say.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Schardt?
Hi, yes, through to interim CEO. I'm the same as Counselor Wilkinson. I did vote against this, and I'm very grateful that we do have the information. And now I will be supporting this as well, and I will echo Counselor's word. I can't believe I'm saying we're going to fifty percentile, but thank you for the extra work. This has been beat up a long time. I'm in full support of it now.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Schardt. Anybody else? Counselor Bevan?
Yes, thank you, Sarah and administration here and that. I know we asked for more information, and we did get it, and looking at the bands here and that, that we started out with ten and now we're down to seven, which is great and that. And I like the information we got. I wish we would have had this earlier because I was one of them that also voted against it and wanted more information like Counselor Sorenson did and that. I will support this moving forward on that. I don't mind scenario two, but if it's a council wish that we go to number three, clean up the wage grid of the fifty percentile, I have really no problem with that too, but I really like what was presented to us here, and it's just too bad we didn't know this at the very start. I would have supported it from the start if I would have known what is shown here, for sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Bevan. Counselor Byer?
Thanks, sir. Through the chair to administration. I supported this previously, and I will continue to support this again. I certainly appreciate the information that was brought up in the procedure, although this isn't a regular piece of information that I think council would request, but I think with the sensitivity of it, I can appreciate and thankful that administration was able to provide that. I, yeah, I'm in support of it for the same reasons I was in support of it last week, and, you know, I don't think that when we have by being well under the fiftieth percentile and knowing that there are a few people that are above their their grid, and time will work that out. You know, which also means that there's people that are well under that as well, and I'm pleased that we can get those valuable and essential employees back to a standard that that they know the rest of the province or the rest of the municipalities of similar size to us would earn. So it sounds like that it will move in that direction, and I'm thankful that we can do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other further comments or questions? Counselor Sorenson, and then Counselor Curry, and then Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, through the chair, I just wanted to say that I think we made the right decision, holding off until we had the full picture. I want to thank administration for providing this background information. It was important to me that when we chopped paragraphs out of the policy that we knew that they were getting put somewhere else. And in fact, I believe they were improved when they were put into the procedure, so good job all around, and I think we're making a good decision today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sorenson, Counselor Curry, and then Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, echo a lot of what you have already heard across the board. Thank you very much to administration. I had supported this originally because I fully am in support of us trying to reach that fifty percentile with our staff. I think it's really important that we recognize the importance of being competitive, and fifty percent is not competitive. It's comparable, and so it's a substantial difference, and we know that we have some key employees that are substantially under that. So for me, this philosophy is something we have talked about for years, and I'm really, really happy that we're moving forward with it. Thank you for all your work on getting this forward, and and I really appreciate it, and it looks great. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Curry. Counselor Wilkinson?
To the chair, yeah, I am unmuted. Thank goodness. I just wondered for transparency, I know on the website, the mayor's wages on there, the council's wages are on there. And would we be posting just the compensation range in in the bandwidths? That's all not who's getting what, but what our compensation range is in each band, just for the sake of transparency?
Through to Counselor Wilkinson, typically that would not be public information, only the CEO and elected officials' salary ranges would be posted, but maybe administration can review that and see what is standard policy, but I don't believe that it would be standard practice for municipalities to do that. I don't know.
Don't they? And I know like Alberta Teachers Association, they do. Different companies are coming, just to post within the range, not who's getting.
I'll I'll hand that over to administration for consideration. I personally don't have an issue with that, but as long as we're not identifying employees. CEO Bitner?
Just from what I've seen, I've never ever seen that on any municipalities websites at all, but we do share with each other. If people are calling to ask where what our ranges are, we do we do share them between municipalities. But we don't usually put them out for the public to see because sometimes they can be identifiable as to individual people. But I can check with Colin, and we can look into that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. So thank you, everybody. Oh, go ahead, CEO Bitner.
I just wanted to give some kudos to Colin as well for helping get this all ready for you. He did a lot of work on that for the things that have been put into this presentation and also for things that were sent out to council area.
Thank you.
Thanks, boss.
Thanks, Colin. I'll just reiterate what everybody said here. I I'm glad that we are moving forward. This is not something new. It's something council has discussed for at least two strategic planning sessions. COVID delayed us bringing this forward. And when we know we are behind comparable municipalities, so I think this will put us in a much better position and allow administration to deal with some of the organizational issues, which reflects back to our strategic plan of organizational resilience. And hopefully, along with some of the other policy changes that we have made over the last year, we certainly can see some benefits to attracting and retaining employees, out-of-scope employees in the future. So and once again, thank you to administration for going back and getting the information that council was asking. I think that was critically important, and for council for allowing us to come forward once again with this new information. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried unanimously. Can I get a motion, please, that council approve a five thousand contribution to the Community Futures West Yellowhead Smart Start program to be funded from the unrestricted surplus? Counselor Bevan will make that motion, and I don't know, Counselor Bevan or Counselor Curry, do you want to talk about what Smart Start is? Kind of putting you on the spot here. Counselor Curry?
I was just respecting my elders and giving Counselor Bevan a chat. Oh, I'm in trouble now. I'm in trouble.
I couldn't hit my mute button. You're okay.
So the Smart Set is just a program. As you guys saw in your package, it is a mentorship entrepreneur packet program. The idea of it is that local successful business owners mentor new entrepreneurs. So we match them up with somebody who has been successful, and then they do some coaching with the support of the Community Futures staff. So they do, and they do some individual coaching with the entrepreneurs, but then they also set them up with a local business owner. The idea of being somebody who's in your own community, who can support you with kind of the trends here, any of our bylaws, that kind of information. And then there's additional coaching that happens from our office. So that's the the main aspect of it is just to help new business, new entrepreneurs in the community get linked with coaching from our team, but then also the mentorship with the local business owners. Counselor Bevan, did you want to add?
Actually, some of the businesses that did go through this here and that, they did express interest that they really enjoyed it, and they will also be staying on board to help out in the future here with Community Futures and that. They just couldn't believe how well the Community Futures is run and the great people that got involved with them to put these programs together and how the town has partnered with them to to help any of our business people out and that, and and I thought that was just great from hearing from some of these people that really didn't want a business that didn't want to be mentioned, but they are going to stay on and help out.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Curry and Counselor Bevan. Counselor Byer, go ahead.
Thanks. Through the chair to Counselor Curry or Counselor Bevan. Do you know what the five thousand dollars is used for, or is it? I don't know if it was quite mentioned there, and I don't recall from our previous conversations.
Counselor Curry?
So there's a mixture of things. One would be to help support the staff member. So there is a staff member that organizes it all, does all the coaching aspects. So there is actual sessions where they have coaching, and they bring them together, and then so the majority of that would go to helping with the wage of that specific person. I'm not one hundred percent sure. There might be food and stuff that in the past was served at any of those, but I would say the major majority of that would be to help supplement the the cost of the trainer, even just all the programs, all of those aspects. So it's just a little bit of supplement to the person that's doing the work. There is a main person that organizes all the sessions, does all the coaching and training, and meets with the mentors and the entrepreneurs.
All right. Counselor Byer, follow up?
Yes, please. Through the chair to Counselor Curry or Counselor Bevan. Are a new, is a new startup business, new business startup, are they required to get a loan through Community Futures to access this program, or is it available to any new startup?
Any new startup?
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any further questions, comments, or concerns? CEO Bitner?
Thank you. Just from the administrative part of this, you'll see, we did actually support this last year. We were not aware it was an ongoing program. So that's why it's had to come back this year because it was not included in the budget. If this is an ongoing program for for future years, just making sure that we we include this in the budget for the future. I don't know if Counselor Curry or Counselor even know if this is a continuing ongoing thing. If not, we can leave it out and bring it back each year, but if it is going to be continuing, we can make sure that it's actually put into the budget if council wishes.
Counselor Curry?
So CEO Bitner, the only concern with that, I think, would be is that the priorities for Community Futures are set by the board, and they're set annually, and they're set for the all the whole region, for all the different communities. So this currently, and it is, the priorities also have to be set based on what the funders, they give us a parameter of areas that we have to meet. I would assume that this would stay in the priorities. But to put it permanently into our annual budget could be a concern. I mean, other than the fact it could be removed, we might not need it. It is something that we could talk to Nancy at Community Futures about, but it is just one of those things that it might not be the priority of the board, or it might not be a need. So if they don't think it's a need, then they won't run it. But I could look into that with Nancy and then prior to next budget, make sure that you know what she says about that.
Okay, that would be, that would be great. Thanks. For now, we won't, and I'll wait till we hear back from Nancy, I think.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, well, I'll just speak to this. I think one thought I have just on on that point, CEO Bitner, is maybe we want to talk, think about having some money set aside into an economic development reserve that we put in annually and then take out if if so, if we get requests like this, or to do things such as the promotional videos or some of the other economic development initiatives that may come up during the year. Just food for thought. I am supportive of this. I think that we are seeing a lot of interest in entrepreneurship in our region. We've seen a number of new businesses start up here in our community here during the pandemic, which is absolutely amazing, and some of those businesses have relied on Community Futures West Yellowhead for some support. So I'd like to see this for sure this year for us to support this with what's going on with COVID and our economic situation. So with that, Counselor Curry?
Sorry, Mayor. You said something that I was thinking and forgot to say. That is one thing I think would be interesting for us to look at when coming to budget. Instead of putting it as a specific project, if we were to allocate five thousand dollars or what it may be to Community Futures projects, because one thing that we could almost always guarantee is that Edson will have some kind of project, and that project will be determined with, we say, from the two representatives on council that are at that board. So that's another option, and knowing that some years, depending on capacity, it might not happen with Community Futures. But I do think it would be easier for them to plan and be able to commit what kind of staffing they have available if there was somewhat of a, you know, small annual guarantee for funding from us. I do know Hinton has, for the last couple of years, they've had a lot of success with their partnership with Community Futures, and that has been kind of a steady contribution of what they've put in.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried unanimously. We have no information items, no sundry items. We're going to go to council committee reports going back to May the fifth. And today we will start with Counselor Sorenson.
Yes, thank you. May the fifth, those at the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority, we had a session with the consultant and just going over auctions moving forward and people's thoughts of what needs to be fixed. We kind of, we, over the last month or so, we've all provided those kind of comments to the consultant in private, and now it's a chance to do it all out in a session format. So it was really informative, and I'm looking forward to what his recommendations. Then pretty much the next step is to come to councils. And so I expect presentation to this council and so that we can move forward and improve the governance of that board. Thank you. Oh, oh, sorry. And then Mayor Lemon, that was at Community of the Whole meeting. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sorenson. Counselor Schardt?
Okay, the only thing I have to report is Committee of the Whole, and then I apologize to council. Due to a mix-up, I was supposed to be on the synergy group, so I will make sure next time, but I apologize if I would have known that, I would have got a hold of Counselor Byer. So that's it for my report.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Curry.
I also just have the Committee of the Whole on the eleventh.
All right. Counselor Wilkinson?
I went to the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management as well. Very interesting with the consultants that we have working. And we also did discuss the government's decision to discontinue the funding for the treatment of hazardous wastes effective June first, twenty twenty-one. That will cost over fifty thousand dollars to the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management, which means all of our municipalities, unless things change. So we're hoping that we can lobby to get this changed. On the sixth, I had an individual Zoom meeting, just to finish off an issue with the Evergreen Foundation. On the eleventh, I have the Committee of the Whole, and on the thirteenth, we had a full day strategic planning session for the Evergreens Foundation, sort of deciding where we're going to continue. It looks like August will be the move-in date for Hinton. And then we have, as I say, got the two point two five million for the grand cash bill, but Wildwood actually is in the queue prior to grand cash, so we had discussions on that, which one we'll go ahead with first, and I think on the whole, we sort of think drag our feet till lumber prices come down, but that's not fair to the seniors that need something, but the costs, we can't even imagine what they'll come in at. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Bevan?
On the sixth, I had an IRC meeting. On the eleventh, a call meeting. And just here on the nineteenth here, or no, talking to Nancy from Community Futures here on our meetings before, June nineteenth is coming up here. Lemonade Day is a goal. AHS has given permission to hold it with strict guidelines, and they are very strict, and they're going to be keeping in touch with them. They've had forty-three participants to date that want to be involved in this and that. And they are looking for more, and I know I've been contacted from a few different people. Is registration still open? Yes, registration is still open, so if you want to get the kids involved and yourself and that, you know, please give us a call. We can give you the packages, whatever, and stuff like that, and it is on a Saturday. And more will be coming out from Community Futures in the future here and that. And I'd just like to say good job on your regional mayors of ritual conference, Mayor. I did tune into that, and that I found it very informative.
Thank you. Counselor Byer?
Thanks. I just had on May eleventh, the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Counselor Curry, you had your head up?
Can I just add for Lemonade Day, we're looking for volunteers. So it is Saturday, the twenty-third. Is that a Saturday? Before I say that, if if the twenty-third is a Saturday, then I have my calendar right. Twenty-sixth.
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth, wrong one, one wrong Saturday, one Saturday extra. So they're looking for volunteers for judging, so if you guys could let Counselor Bevan and I know right away, if you're available that Saturday, we can forward that on because they are looking for a crew for the Edson.
Sign me up. I love lemonade.
Okay.
Can I just, one more thing, though, before you become a volunteer, you have to fill out the form and take it down to the RCMP and have a credit check done. And it's going to take at least two weeks. I was down there. It's going to take at least two weeks. You have to have a credit, have to have a check before you can do anything at all, and we're looking for five people in our region.
I will withdraw them. No, I'm kidding.
If you've had a credit check done just within the relatively recent time, does that count?
I asked the RCMP to date when I was down there, and they said no, because a letter comes over from Nancy. We printed off, and I said, well, I've had one done just recently, and they said, sorry, you're on record. You haven't been arrested yet, but still, you got to go through this again. I said, okay, no problem.
Wow, I'll I'll decline as well. That is very silly.
Counselor Byer?
Through the chair to either Counselor Curry or Counselor Bevan. Do I dare ask why you require a criminal record check to to be a judge for tasting lemonade?
It's actually those. Yeah, it's the vulnerable sector checker. It's not the criminal, it's a vulnerable sector because the whole time, as the judge, you'll be interacting with the youth the whole time, the kids. Yeah, so the biggest priority is the actual vulnerable sector check. Yeah.
Counselor Schardt?
Actually, Counselor Byer clarified it. You, you guys kept saying credit check, and I thought, why is my credit hard against criminal check?
We want to know you can afford the lemonade, gee.
Well, that's what I was thinking. How expensive is this lemonade? I need a credit check.
All right. Thank you. My report is May eleventh. I had Cal. On the twelfth, the town hall with Premier Kenny, Minister Shandro, and Dr. Hinshaw. And, you know, I've attended many of these town halls. The tone was certainly different in this one. The the message was very clear. Restrictions are not changing, and we need people to adhere to the protocols in place right now, and people need to get vaccinated, otherwise things are going to remain closed. So the message to everyone is, please get your best best vaccinations and and follow the rules in place. Non-pandemic, and this was an interesting number, a non-pandemic, the peak for ICU beds in the province was one hundred and seventy. Most ever used, one hundred and seventy in any usual year. At that point in time, and I know it's increased since then, but we had one hundred and seventy COVID patients plus an additional sixty in medical, for other medical issues, thirty-five percent above normal capacity, and that number continues to grow. Just checking the AHS website or the provincial government website the other day, we only had four ICU beds available in the province the other day, so they have the ability to expand capacity, but that's not sustainable, and obviously, they don't want to go down that road. So that was very interesting, and as you know, they've launched the vaccination map that shows vaccination rates across the province. We have four and a half million doses coming into Canada this week. So there's going to be a massive undertaking, trying to get needles into arms here over the next little while, and hopefully, we'll see these restrictions ease. We're all just so done with COVID right now. So that was a very interesting conversation. On the thirteenth, the regional mayor's BSN event. We had over forty businesses participate from Jasper, Hinton, Edson, and Yellowhead County. Some really great questions about what's going on. And I certainly was hoping for more folks from Edson to participate, but we did have a few businesses that did show up. It was really a great opportunity to hear their thoughts and to share information. At the end of the day, if they're able to open and generate revenue, that that's all that they want. They just want a government to get out of the way, and we certainly want to see that for them as well. So I thank everybody for participating. I would like to particularly thank West Yellowhead Community Futures for hosting this, as well as Louise Gale at Alberta Labor for organizing, and Steve Bethgee with our communications department that had did all the technical and communication support around this at very last minute. So thank you, everyone involved in that. And then on the fourteenth, mayors from across rural communities, Mayor Grand Prairie, Slave Lake, Edson, Hinton, White Court, there's others, had a meeting with Associate Minister Nally regarding the ASO tariff changes that they are proposing and the impacts to some of the large industrial producers in this province, particularly forestry mills. Some proposed changes could cost them millions of dollars while only providing residential consumers with the savings of one dollar per month on their on their electricity bills. So huge concerns about this, the impacts on jobs, on important industries in rural communities. I frankly told Associate Minister Nally that if we lose our mill, we're we're done. They're our biggest taxpayer, they're our biggest employer, and these types of changes should not be moving forward. And there's concerns as well as how ASO is approaching this. They are a standalone regulator, so they don't take direction from government, but Minister Nally did commit that he will stay abreast of this issue. It is the number one issue that he is dealing with right now. They are in the beginning process of this review, so government won't be involved towards the end, but he is going to keep So government won't be involved towards the end, but he is going to keep us updated. We we asked Mayor Chichak had a white court to be the main point of contact. So I expect to hear more about this in the months ahead, but it's certainly concerning for for a lot of the major mills in this province and some of the other industrial producers who are going to be hit with additional tariffs. And that is my report. With that, we have no financial items, questions from media and public regarding items from this council meeting.
We have Adrian Tate with us. Adrian, go ahead.
Good evening. I have two questions. Through the, through the chair to councillors Curry or Bevan. I'm wondering with the Smart Start program, do you have to, do the entrepreneurs have to be at a certain stage in their business journey? Like, do they have to have already started a business? Are they just considering a new career? Is there any requirements that way?
Councillor Curry or councillor Bevan? Councillor Curry.
I was waiting to see if councillor Bevan was going to go ahead. Adrian, I'm not one hundred percent, but I do believe you have to have your business going. So I think for this one, you have to have started. However, we do do coaching ahead of time with anybody who's looking to start a business. So there is that option. But I think with the Smart Set, it is the that you are actually have the business up and ready to go. But somebody could meet with Community Futures ahead of time to get there if they had questions ahead of time. Is that correct councillor Bevan? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it says program is open to existing business owners in operation for less than five years who wish to maintain to grow their business and that. And the program provides a solid foundation for training and everything else. So you have to have your business up and running for less than five years for sure.
Okay, and then a follow up question, if I may?
Go ahead.
I'm wondering, I see one letter of support from Edson. I'm wondering how many participants took part last year from our area?
I don't think we have that information, but I'm sure Nancy Robbins would be able to give you further details on participation with Community Futures unless councillor Curry or Bevan, you have that information?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No other questions, Adrian?
No, I think that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will take a motion for a German councillor Shannard. All those in favor? Motion carry. Have a great night, everyone.
Night.